Folks, we can have, you're ready to call a meeting in order, please. We'll settle down, we can get moving. First order of business as usual is a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, and to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has anybody have any questions on how we're running this public hearing? There are sheets up here with the rules and regulations. If you don't know them, I suggest you grab one, so you know that procedure. There is a definite rules and regulations that we follow for public hearings. Our first order of business is the acceptance and correction of minutes from 12:19, public and non-public.
I'll make a motion, we accept the 12:19, 22, public and non-public minutes with corrections of DPD. Second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Colas, is in the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
The microphones do not broadcast into the room. They are for the TV, so we just ask the audience to remain quiet, please. Thank you.
Okay, the motion was made by Mark and settled by Colas, so there is discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining, motion passes.
I'm abstaining.
Pardon me, you abstaining?
I'm abstaining, yep.
Did you get that?
Yes.
We have an announcement this evening. The Goffstown Budget Committee will hold a public hearing tomorrow, Tuesday, January 10th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Craig Heber Auditorium, Goffstown High School, 27 Wallace Road, to receive input on the 2023 budget for the town of Goffstown School District, Goffstown Village Water Precinct, and the Grassmere Village Water Precinct. A snow date, if necessary, of the public hearing will be 6:00 PM on Thursday, January 12th, at 2023, at the same location. The Budget Committee will meet immediately following conclusion of the public hearing to consider public input and recommendations for the annual warrant. Any person with a disability who wishes to attend this public meeting and needs to be provided with a reasonable accommodation in order to participate, please call Town Hall at 497-8990, extension 100, in advance, so arrangements can be made. And also, a reminder to residents interested in running to serve as an elected town or school district official, candidate filing opening of Town Clerk's office Wednesday, January 25th, during regular Town Hall business hours, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. Candidate filing period ends Friday, February 3rd, at 5:00 PM. Candidates filing on the last day of February 3rd must appear in person. Again, candidate opening is currently listed on the town's website. The list can be found by clicking on Elections Info on the home page and looking under Town Clerk's 2023 Election Information. Right now, Select Board, there's one position for three years, Budget Committee four for three years, Budget Committee one for two years, Cemetery Trustee one for three years, Library Trustee three for three years, Library Trustee two for one year, Planning Board two for three years, Sewer Commission one for three years, Supervisor of the Checklist one for five years, Town Clerk one for three years, Trustee of the Trust Funds one for three years, Zoning Board of Adjustment two for three years, and on the School Board, there's three positions for three years. Derek, you want to do things for a couple of minutes?
Sure, if you can go to tab nine in your packet, you have your committee meetings scheduled for the next two weeks. Again, the budget hearing is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the high school. Sewer Commission is in this room at 6:00 PM tomorrow night.
I got it.
We have the snow date for the public, for Budget Committee, I don't think we'll need that, but missing from the packet is you Planning Board at 7:00 PM on Thursday.
I have that.
Thank you. Next week, just a reminder, on Monday, Town Hall and the Goffstown Public Library will be closed in observance of Martin Luther King Civil Rights Day. Wednesday, 6:30 PM, the Library Trustees are meeting at the library.
I'll be there.
And 7:00 PM, Parks and Rec Commission at the Parks and Rec Building.
That's big.
At your next page, you have your consent agenda. You have a resignation of a DPW truck driver, resignation of a DPW solid waste truck driver, and you have hourly pay increases for four crossing guards. Also added today in your room is a New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services permit by notification. This is for slip line of a corrugated metal culvert on Leech Hill Road. This failed during the severe rain we had about a month ago.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Jim. Any discussion of questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining, motion passes.
Your next page, you have assessors' recommendations. You have veterans' tax credits, all recommended, for map three lot 18, map 17 lot 43, map seven lot 71-5-10, map 34 lot 118, map 34 lot 122, map 29 lot 1. You have map nine lot 26-39, and then you have another on map nine lot 26-39. You have map nine lot 58-21, map 27 lot 7, map four lot 6, map eight lot 46, map four lot 87-5-23, 23. Then you have a Veterans Tax Credit and Service Connected Disability recommended for map nine lot 26-39, and map four lot 87-5-23, 23. You have a tax deferral for elderly or disabled recommended for map 43 lot 7, and you have solar energy systems exemptions recommended for map nine lot 42-1, and map eight lot 5-1, and map nine lot 4-38-1.
I'll make a motion to approve the assessors' recommendations as presented.
Second.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Colas. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining, motion passes.
I think we have time for the next one. Your next page, you have a budget transfer request. This is for quarterly benefit cash outs for those employees that do not take the town's insurance benefit. This is for quarter three and for quarter four of 2022, so we'd just be seeking a motion to make that budget transfer.
Motion to approve the budget transfer requested for the reallocation of $99,910, 10, 10 and 94 cents for insurance benefits to the various wage lines as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim. Any discussion, questions?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining, motion passes.
I think the next one, the ACH vendors, which is on page, packet page 49, may take a little bit of discussion, so I don't know if you wanted to...
Well, we've got public comment here in a couple of minutes, so... Just to let the people know ahead of time, and you might have seen this, but we have three public hearings tonight. Our first public hearing at 6:15 is the acceptance of the donation of land, and then another one, the second one will be acceptance and expenditures of unanticipated funds, and then the third one, of course, will be the authorizing the 7.2 million bond for the expansion of the Goffstown Public Library, which was a warrant article submitted by petition. So first up, on the 6:10 public comment, the 6:10 public comment would be anything other than those public hearings. Is there anybody here for the 6:10 public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Derek, can we start five minutes early or do we need to wait?
I think you can probably explain the rules of procedure. Again, we do have sign up sheets for each of the public hearings going around up front. The library one, I think, is moving around the room, and we all... It is, okay, great, thank you. And we do have the board's rules of procedures that explain public hearings, and I'll just go through those real quick before we start the two public hearings that are before the library one, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair.
You go right ahead.
So we are going to take each public hearing in order, and the first two public hearings, I'm going to be asking the board for a vote on this evening, so they will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on those can come forward. They will close the public hearing, and then the board will vote on those matters. Residents can come up and speak. You must identify yourself and your address. We ask that you sign in on the sheet to assist our minute taker. And non-residents, the presiding officer, the chair, may allow non-residents to speak once. Then he'll put out a call for anybody who wish to come up a second time for the public hearing. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, so that everyone can have a chance to be heard, and I think that's pretty much it, so I think we can move into the scheduled ones if you'd like.
Okay. We do have a public hearing required by New Hampshire RSA 31:95-E. The issue is owner of a vacant parcel of land surrounded by town-owned land contacted the town asking to donate the land to the town. Goffstown Planning Board made a recommendation to the Select Board to accept proposed donation of land on 12/8/22. Goffstown Conservation Commission canceled its 12/14/22 meeting. Chair Jean Walker and the commission would support the acceptance of the donated vacant land and will vote on 1/25/23. The public hearing was required under, as I said, RSA 31:95-E. I'll open the public hearing for any input. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion, Peter. To accept the donation of a 7,500 square foot vacant parcel of land off Mountain Base Road identified as tax map 42 lot 46 from Francois Maurier, currently assessed at $2,100 in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 31:95-E.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was by Colas, it was seconded by Jim. Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining, motion passes.
If you go to page 10 of your packet, and you'll get the next public hearing information there. In the bottom, bottom right corner. Oh, thank you, please.
This is from the Goffstown Police Department. Required public hearing and vote to accept and expend FY 2023 body worn and dashboard camera grant in the amount of $10,534 for the purchase of additional body worn cameras for the Goffstown Police Department. Select Board approved applying for this grant on 9/1/22. Let me fix that. Financial impact is the, this is a 50% grant with a 50% local match. I'll open the public hearing. Seeing no comment, we'll close the public hearing. I would take a motion.
I would move to accept and expend, and expended the unanticipated funds under RSA, Hampshire RSA 31:95-B, in the amount of $10,534 made available through the New Hampshire Department of Safety's FY 2023 Body Warm and Dashboard Camera Grant for the purchase of additional body worn cameras for the Goffstown Police Department.
Second.
Motion by said, Jim seconded by Mark. Is there any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining, motion passes. The next is public hearing required by New Hampshire RSA 33:8-A1, AI, I'm sorry. Petition warrant article was submitted to Select Board Office on 1/4/2023. Supervisors of the checklist verified signatures on 1/4/23. Process is a 6:15 today, a bond hearing. The Select should allow petitioners an opportunity to explain the project for the benefit of those attending public hearing, receive public input, and then close the hearing. And then tomorrow, on 1/10/23, as you heard earlier, the Budget Committee, Goffstown High School Budget Committee will be presented as part of the bond hearing. The Budget Committee will be voting on the budget and appropriation articles, and then on 1/23/23, the Select Board will be meeting and will take a final recommendation vote on the 2023 warrant. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing and would take the...
Do you want me to call them out as...
Yeah, but don't we want to have the petitioners come up first?
I believe the petitioners are listed first, Laura Stevens, and then Samantha Holman.
I'm not speaking as a petitioner.
Okay.
Is there somebody here from the petitioners to speak to the article?
Yes.
Come on up. Again, state your name and address.
Samantha Holman, 35, Saco Lane, and I am the Chair of the Goffstown Public Library Board of Trustees. Thank you for hosting tonight's hearing. This isn't my first time up here, and you've all heard my spiel, but for the audience members tonight and for yourselves as a reminder, you've all heard me tell you plenty of times that our 113-year-old historic library is about 11,000 square feet too small for a town of our size, and that it can no longer accommodate the needs of our community. It physically cannot hold any more materials. It's, and there's nowhere for people to gather or even sit, and you've now seen this. You've been to the library, and you've heard me talk about the timeline and the amount of privately held funds that have been spent, not raised by taxation, on this project to date, and how the design plans would not only benefit the community, but were designed based on feedback from the community. You've seen the awards. Our library is one of the best in the state, and we're storing materials in the bathroom. This is the part where I remind you that our award-winning library also only has one toilet for the 37,608 visitors that came to the library last year. Some of you have seen materials are also stored in the furnace room and in the fire escape. Bill Connor certainly has. It's not his favorite thing. He actually has quite a list of things that he doesn't quite love about the library building, but I only have three minutes to speak. So before I move on, I'll also add that our current library is not ADA accessible. The addition, where the current entrance was added, was designed to make it accessible, but we have had instances where folks in wheelchairs still can't fit through the door, and they also can't pivot to make that left turn into the elevator. That entrance is also mere feet from the children's room, which poses an enormous safety hazard. We have had children run out of the children's room through the door and into the parking lot. This project would address all of these issues. 16 parking spaces would become about 47. The new lobby and circulation area would put a considerable distance and a second set of doors between the children's room and the parking lot. It would add community space for about 100 people that could actually be used after hours, because it would be gated off from the rest of the building. There would be seating and storage, a place where you could sit, have a cup of coffee with your friends, have a conversation, something that you can't do in the library right now. There's, I think, one chair on the second floor. It would also add accessibility, so folks could enter and exit the building comfortably, and they would be able to access the materials on the second floor, because there would be a ramp. It would add staff workspace, a space where staff could sit down and eat their lunch and work, and don't have to heat up their food next to the same sink that the custodian empties his mop bucket. And it would add bathrooms. I won't go through the full list, but I would like, I would love it if folks have questions or want to learn more about the project. All of the information is accessible on the library's website, be it timeline, the plans, the results of the survey. We also recorded all of our listening sessions. They're posted on YouTube and can be accessed through the library's website as well.
Thank you. The way this is going to work, Derek, going to call people up on the list, like you said earlier, if you weren't here, you had the maximum of three minutes to ask your questions or make your statements. So Derek, go ahead.
Laura Stevens.
Hi, thank you. I'm Laura Stevens, I'm at 33 Orchard Hill Road. I do serve as a member of the Budget Committee, and I am a trustee for the library. I'm not actually here to speak in either of those capacities tonight. I'm here just to speak as a resident who has some expertise in the field of libraries. My advanced degree is in information science, and I work in library administration in a different town. Based on conversations that I've heard and seen, and posts I've seen on social media recently, I've become aware that there are misconceptions about today's libraries, and I just want to speak to that and provide some context about what a library is and does in today's climate, where there's more internet than ever, and more need for people to gather than ever in safe places. So libraries are much more than the quiet book warehouse that they kind of started out as. They're placed with multiple uses, and they've changed significantly to adapt to societal changes and needs of communities. You don't just see storytime anymore. The programs are vast and encompass every member of the population, from art programs to yoga to book clubs, craft groups, tutoring, to guest speakers and performances. The library offers, and these are general libraries in New Hampshire that do serve these purposes, and Goffstown could and does already with some of them. The library offers discounted and free passes to local and New England museums, parks, and historical sites. There's streaming and downloading movie and TV services that would be much like your paid versions of Netflix, Hulu, things like that. There's free services for audiobooks that are comparable to paid subscriptions like Audible. There is and should be community space that community members can reserve for meetings. There are services like homebound delivery for those who cannot make trips out of their house, and libraries are lending unconventional items. It's not just books, movies, music. It's tools, it's converters, projectors, musical instruments, board games, lawn games, art supplies, laptops and other tablet devices, sewing machines and supplies, activities geared towards specific populations, such as those with hearing difficulties, Alzheimer's, seeing impairment, and mobility challenges. The list is vast, and it's unique depending on the community and the location of the library. Libraries also provide help with technology.
You have 10 seconds.
Cut it out!
Sorry, it's gotta be aggressive when it goes off, sorry.
Okay, so, in the end, a library is a third place, and that means people can gather there outside their home, outside their work, and this is the viability that could be in Goffstown.
Thank you.
That was quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Lisa Mazer.
Readers are good for reading, not for talking.
Name and address again, please.
Yeah, okay, hi, I'm Representative Lisa Mazer, 39 Shirley Park Road, and I am a Goffstown resident as well. And I want to start by saying, first of all, I want to emphasize that our questions, and my questions and comments here tonight, are not meant to disparage the library or Diane Hathaway, who does... Hathaway, who does a wonderful job as Director. And I'm looking at you and saying that to your face because you do a wonderful job. This is not against you or the library.
Thank you.
Yes, expanding the library would be nice, but in my humble opinion, not needed in these difficult economic times. I door-knocked on hundreds of doors these past few months, and our community is concerned about how to pay their mortgages, rent, put food on the table, and gas up their vehicles right now. They absolutely cannot afford higher taxes due to this decision. If this keeps up, many of them will have to relocate. It sounds like we have some police, parks, and rec, and fire department, and school decisions coming up, as well as a reevaluation. Our schools will need attention, too, especially with all of this new housing coming in. This $7.2 million amount has grown from its inception, and Diane said it will probably continue to increase as well. I urge all of the Select Board members to not recommend this warrant article on March's ballot. Maybe instead of an expansion, we get some volunteers in there to help reorganize, create some cozy seating areas, or a bookmobile set up outside during nicer weather for people to relax at and read. There are a lot of amazing thinkers outside of the box in our community that would come together and help come up with alternatives that would cost thousands, not millions. So thank you for your consideration, and thank you for listening to our concerns. Thank you for your service, and I've emailed this to the Board as well. Thank you.
My name is Harrison Spaltov. I'm a resident at 75 Elm Street, Goffstown. I'm a student at University of New Hampshire. I just want to thank you all for offering this ability for public comment. Right now, families are struggling to pay for home heating, pay for electricity. The price was doubled over the summer, even groceries. I was at Market Basket yesterday with my mom. I'm one of five. It's $5.50 for a carton of eggs. We simply cannot afford to pay $7.2 million for expanding on the library right now. We're in a recession. If you look at the library, this money is not going towards making sure that, like, the building's not at risk at failing or crumbling. This is not for infrastructure. It is simply for creating spaces for people to gather. Now, that's great, but we already have that in the community, so we should not prioritize this. I can name three businesses right now. Apothica, they offer classes for kids and adults. Night Owl Quilting, they offer classes for kids and adults. And my own family business, Lottie Pops Boutique, where I just came from maybe an hour ago, where we just expanded our gathering space so we can have more classes this year and have more people to come. In this economic times, we should not be recklessly spending $7.2 million for an unnecessary project. So I kindly ask you to please recommend no come March. Thank you.
Thank you. You've got a big, big list there. You better read fast, Brian.
Read fast? I might paraphrase because I resubmitted my comments earlier. Get my glasses on. Well, good evening, and thank you Select Board and Derek and Danielle for all the activity and flurry of communications I sent. My name is Brian Mazer. I live at 39 Shirley Park Road. And like my wife said, Lisa, in a few words, this is not anti-library. What I want to say is, I want to say that today is all about, more about physically responsible or trying to be physically responsible. I think the library is a valuable resource for families with children, as well as for the under-resourced. And I'm currently a library cardholder. I use the library, so I think it's a great resource. But I think pragmatically, what I'm struggling with, I think a lot of us are, is I haven't seen any kind of solid justification behind the expansion. I know there's data on the website, but it doesn't get into the brass tacks of why the expansion. I don't see any kind of real needs assessment or the justification behind it. Now, what's really troubling me beyond that is some data points that I think all of us as residents are struggling with is the second half of last year, each household realized a 7.1% tax rate increase. And again, it's going to go up again this coming year because of the reevaluation. So again, our taxes are already high, and if you looked at the townships in New Hampshire, out of 256 townships, we're 222nd out of 256. So we're already at the top 85 percentile for tax rates. And if it keeps on going, we're going to be in the $30 range per thousand, and then, who knows, it might be Claremont. So to me, we have to stop the hemorrhaging, and we have to look at, okay, does a town really need it? And I haven't seen the town really come out and say, yeah, two-thirds, it's Corham, we want the library. I don't, I don't see it. So again, I'm not anti-library, but there has to be sound justification about why we need it for us to kind of dig deeper into our pockets to spend extra money on our tax I think beyond that, it's, again, to me, it's just purely a financial thing. And to be honest with you, I think for the Select Board, and I'm not in the Select Board, I know you have a hard job and you do a good job, but we have to look beyond how we collect our revenues and find new revenue streams because we can't keep on going out to the same revenues, same, sorry, the same pool of money, meaning us taxpayers. We have to look beyond that in regards to getting more businesses to offset our tax burden when it comes to businesses. So because I look at Bedford, I look at Merrimack, I look at Dundan Dairy, they have like 30% coming from businesses versus we're like 12%, not even. So to me, if they look beyond than what we're currently doing to offset what we're doing as well. So that's all I wanted to say. I appreciate the time, guys, and I hope that you don't, you don't look at appearances and just make the right decision that we don't need a library because, again, I haven't seen justification for it to be expanded.
Thank you.
That's all I'm going to say.
Hello, my name is Sarah. I live on Elm Street, 233 Elm Street. I'm a recent addition to the community. We bought our house here in Goffstown three years ago. This is our first home and community that me and my husband have settled in as adults. We are so thrilled to be here, and I want to thank everybody that serves the community and as a part of the community. It is great to be here. I would like to address the question on the library addition. I know we don't have much time, so I'll dive right in. I'm actually opposed to this. I think on the surface, it sounds good and feels like a great community project, but ultimately, for the cost of $7.2 million and with the economy potentially going through extremely tough times in 2023, our money could probably be spent better elsewhere. There are dozens of reasons why and how we could do this better, smarter, and of better value, and take the balance of these funds and get it back to the taxpayers that live in our town. If it's about access to information and resources, there are awesome ways to do that through technology. We can invest in cloud storage for more storage and more catalogs and ebooks. We can invest in more access to the internet and Wi-Fi hubs for the underprivileged to get online. And beyond that, if we think about what this library does, the young and the old are probably less likely to travel to the library to enjoy it. Maybe we invest in a tablet-sharing program for the people. There's ways we can bring information to the people and people to the information that does not require a $7.2 million building. Also, with building the library's virtual abilities would fall in line with sustainability, and it would be best for our economy to have less cars on the road and lower the carbon footprint. Again, in good times, maybe it would be considered, but in this time, our people are struggling to make ends meet, to pay for heating oil, and struggling to buy groceries. I'm all for information and better access and a better way to do it, and I suggest we research the overbuilding in addition. We need to think and work smarter, not harder. We have the technology to leverage a better way. All right? Thank you, everyone, for your time, and I appreciate all you do for the community.
Thank you.
Rudy Wilman.
I'm going to have to pass. I have some mobility issues.
Okay. Sally Booth.
Sally, you did it. Yeah, well, I wasn't planning on this. My name is Sally Booth, and I live at 40 Ashlar Drive. And I don't come deeply prepared to testify here, but I do believe that the library has a great deal to offer our community. I have taught and been involved with libraries for a number of years, and I think libraries are serving a different purpose than they used to. They're not places where we just pile up a whole lot of books. In fact, many libraries are figuring out how to get rid of some of the books that they have because people aren't reading books, they're online. I think that the library provides, excuse me, a meeting place for people to meet each other, to talk together, for kids to be, for adults to be. And I think our library has done a very good job of finding ways for, to provide access to people who maybe have mobility issues or are not able to actually come to the library. I think, I understand the concern about the amount of money and that people are struggling in many ways right now. But I think in many ways, because of that, there is a need to have a place that people can go and find the help that they need, the community involvement that they need in a positive way. So I want to suggest that you vote yes for this. I think it is a very good investment.
Thank you.
Happy Beale, 467 East Dunbarton Road. So I think following on Sally and Laura is good for me because I don't have so many specifics, but it's more my experience, my whole life, with wonderful public libraries that I just wanted to talk about. I've lived in small towns my whole life, in New York State, Pennsylvania, Iowa, and now New Hampshire. In each of these small towns, a public library has played a really large role in the life of the community. As a child growing up in upstate New York, the library was always there, from the time I got my first library card in kindergarten until I graduated from high school. Next came the small town in Iowa where I went to college, and even though we had great research libraries, I still found a center in the community itself. It was just always there, always open, and filled with people from the small community. Then I lived in a small town in the Poconales in northeastern Pennsylvania where I raised my children. All of these towns were actually smaller than Goffstown. They all had working libraries, very active, and they were all working toward improving, expanding, updating their library facilities. Laura and Sally have just explained to you some of the things that a modern library can provide today. In Goffstown, we have a dedicated staff. They're always coming up with new and creative ideas for programming and making the best use of the space that they have. But there are so many more possibilities, as Laura mentioned, that our new and renovated space would allow. We're proud to have won the award of the 2019 NHLTA Library of the Year, and this past year, our director, Diane Hathaway, who was awarded the Library Director of the Year. We have a super staff, exceptional programming, an active board and friends at the library, but we could just do so much more with a larger, more appropriate, and functional space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Coughlin, 83 New Boston Road. I'm a library trustee, obviously a citizen, but I also chair the Goffstown Public Library Foundation. I'm certainly in support of the project, and I urge you to vote yes for it. I'm going to tell a little bit of some history. I am originally from Goffstown. I've lived here my whole life. I live in the house my father built. After his day job doing construction, he built the house. I was a kid in the 80s, and construction was not good. He got laid off every winter, and the library was there. The library is a place where you go, and there's not an expectation of having to pay for something. Yes, you could go to Apothica, which is great, and have a drink and socialize a little bit. You're buying their beverages. You can go to McDonald's and do the same thing. The library, you can go and commune with other members of our town without the expectation to pay for something. And I feel that we talk about this as being a service, and we don't emphasize how much that people who don't have a lot need the library. Folks who don't have home internet, they are coming to our library to use our computers. There is oftentimes a line to use some of our computers. And for some folks, they come because they don't have someone to be with them during the day, and they actually could use that socialization. And we have very little space that's not held with books in order for people to do that. And I know it can seem kind of a lofty, like, large project, but I can't overestimate the amount that having this place for the community to gather is important. And as the Board, I'm not speaking fully on the Board, but I'm just talking as being a trustee, we know it's a large price tag. We 100% understand it. The price estimate has gone up just because of inflation issues that we've been dealing with. We have a bond schedule that Danielle has helped us with, and if we were to not look at the price in the aggregate but break it down, I was checking the census, we roughly have about 6,200 household units in town, so this isn't even talking about businesses. So that $7.2 million divided over 15 years divided by that household aggregate, it works out to about $130 a year for the average household, which is still a lot. We don't mean to say that it's not, but sometimes if we break it down into those smaller numbers, we can see it. I certainly do urge the Select Board to vote yes in favor of this, and it is an investment, and there will always be other projects out there. We know the police station needs to expand. So thank you.
Richard Bear Freeman.
Richard Bear Freeman, 111 Terrell Hill Road. As most people have said, I'm not anti-library, but I am anti-spending right now. We all know that money is tight for all families. We're also looking at it as an expansion. Where this library is now, if we expand, what are you going to do about the traffic in that area? You know, at some points in days at Elm and Main Street, and trying to get out of there, at some days, it's 15, 20 minutes before you can take a left or a right out of that town. Where are you going to put all that extra traffic coming in there? $7.2 million for an expansion of a library when I think there's other facilities in this town that need that money more, safety-wise. You just put a brand-new communication tower up at the fire station on Terrell Hill Road, and we talked about that to the last meeting. I think that station needs to be upgraded for the safety of our residents. Now, do I, do I believe that the library's a good deal? Yeah, I do, but the money is not. We don't have that money anymore. I mean, you're asking people to dig deep. You know, your kids can go to the library, but we can't take them on a summer vacation. You know, I'm opposed to spending the money. Thank you very much for your time, people.
Hi, I'm Megan Boyd, 2 Reed Street in Goffstown. So I apologize, I was not planning on speaking tonight, so if my thoughts are scattered, I've just been taking notes on my phone. I know that nobody's here to bash the library, and it's been said before, but I'll reiterate that the library is so much more than books and computers. My kids are involved there. My daughter is on the teen advisory board, and when they walk into the library, the librarians know their names, and that makes a huge impact. My son has learning disabilities, and he hates to read, but because of the time we spend in that space and because the librarians know who he is, it's exploded a love of learning for him. Someone mentioned that there are other places in the community to gather. That is true, but they all come with a price. As people are experiencing economic insecurity, the library is a consistent place where they can go and get enrichment activities for their kids. And when we see financially vulnerable people unable to access the kind of enrichment activities that other kids can still afford... that other kids can still afford, there is this achievement gap which widens and widens and widens. And I fear that without the space to accommodate the kinds of services that the libraries has the capacity to offer, that opportunity gap will widen. Especially, again, when you're talking about in an environment where internet is vital, there are people who can't afford internet access, and so they depend on the library. Someone else mentioned as well that they weren't entirely certain what the need for this was. I would urge people to go attend one of the sessions that the libraries put on where the architect himself talks about the space limitations that are there. I went, and there was only one other person from the community there, but it was really helpful to know what's going on. And the other thing I wanted to say is, someone mentioned anecdotally, he hears that there isn't a lot of support from the community for this. But I would urge you that, wouldn't the most accurate way of finding that out would be to put it on the ballot so that the voters could decide? Like I said, the library has meant a great deal to my family, and a fraction of that has to do with the books that they get out from it. It's the relationships that they've built, and investment in online resources is not going to do that. So I would urge you to put it on the ballot, please.
Just to clarify, let's both clarify something. This will be on the ballot.
Okay.
Okay? Automatically goes on the ballot. What we're talking here now, and which will be the same thing with the budget committee tomorrow night, is a recommendation from this board and a recommendation from the budget committee, which is required by law that their money article have a recommendation by the Board of Selectment and by the budget committee. So it will be on the ballot. It's just the questions here now are, does it get recommended or not by this board or the budget committee?
Then I would urge you to recommend.
I just wanted to clear that out, so you knew that it will be on the ballot.
Jennifer Vallee, or Valley.
I'm just going to read from this, I'm a little nervous. I'm Jennifer Valley. I live at 12 Shirley Park Road. I wanted to start off by saying I do love the library, and I utilize it for my family. However, I think with the high cost of food, gas, and utilities, myself and many other taxpaying Goffstonians would not be able to afford a significant tax hike. This $7.2 million price tag comes at a really bad economic time, and I think it is a little bit excessive. Why don't we think outside the box and maybe redesign the library as it stands? I know many who would volunteer their time, including myself, to revamp the current library for thousands instead of millions. I would ask that the select board not recommend this warrant article on March's ballot, and that all the taxpayers vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Crowder.
Hello, my name is John Crowder. I'm a resident of 12 Brandon Lane in Goffstown. And I'm here tonight to stop in and make my recommendation, which is that I feel that this is the wrong year for citizens to face this kind of cost increase to our taxes. And I feel that way because of one particular thing, is that cost of energy has affected all of us so much. I recalled that one year ago today, I was paying $260 for a 100-gallon fill-up of fuel oil, which is enough to heat my small place for about a half a winter. This year, when I called, that price had gone up from $260 for 100 gallons to $660. That's per city fuel right down here in Manchester. And I was in the same state of shock that everyone else was in my neighborhood when I got that bill. That's a big burden for most people that have a house to heat, and it's a big increase. So I think timing-wise, this may be a good idea for another year, but not for 2023, at least the way my budget looks. And I've been very impressed, I have to say though, with the staff at the library. I've been in the process of designing a little educational system for my two-year-old granddaughter, and they were very helpful. They pointed me in the right direction in an area I didn't know much about, as to how to teach a language to a developing two-year-old. So that helped a lot. And I've been very impressed with the facilities, but especially the people in it. You know, I don't think there's any problem, I don't think anyone in this room or this town thinks otherwise. But as far as a $7.2 million expenditure right now, I just don't think it's a good idea for the citizens of Goffstown to face that cost right now, since we have so many other costs that really aren't, in the near future, looking to be any lower than they are now. If anything, they may go higher. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have Diane and Roger Micon listed?
When we signed that paper, we didn't realize we'd be asked to speak. I'm just here in support of the library trustees and the library.
Joan Stevens.
Ditto.
Ditto. Joseph Cameron.
I'm Joseph Cameron, 31 Mall Road in Goffstown. I also do not see the need for the expense for $7.2 million. After the bond and all the other expenses, and by the time it would actually get in place, it would be definitely a lot more money than $7.2. And on top of that, as other people have mentioned, we have the expenses that are coming up for the police department, for the fire department, repairs done to both the Bartlett School, the Maple Leaf School, and it just goes on and on and on. And people, and with this, with the economy, with the way things are right now, I just can't say it. There were so many areas that we need to put money into in the town that this, I don't believe is one right now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Lauren Dukas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, select board members. My name is Lauren Dukas. I live at 23 Ginger Drive. I am here to speak as a private citizen in support of the library bond and ask that the select board make its recommendation as such. I am not authorized to speak as such, but I am a member of your budget committee, as well as a budget committee representative on the CIP committee that looked at the seven-year planning tool this summer. I'm also the budget committee representative for the school board's subcommittee on facilities planning that looked at your school needs and size, your building concerns coming up. So I know the select board has much more information than I do, but for the benefit of everyone, I've seen the plans, I've seen your seven-year planning tool for financials. Let me reiterate that there is no plan to, as you all well know, I'm sorry, but there is no plan to build on any schools, there's no plans to expand. When we, when the CIP committee presented to the planning board, we were very specifically told, we're not interested in the next seven years, which I found an interesting viewpoint at the time. But the only thing that was on for fiscal year '24 was the library, because it's needed. I think it's short-sighted to say, there'll be things coming. There will always be things coming. Folks like to throw around the, "Goffstown is growing. It grows, and we need to support it." I agree with everyone here about the cost. I'm aware and very appreciative that the select board is very sensitive to this matter, and they use their powers to set our tax rate. So just because evaluations are coming does not mean our tax rate will be the same, and I know the select board is very cognizant of the financial strains that we're all under right now. I share everyone's concern. I wish our state legislator did more. I wish that we did not have these costs downshifted to our towns and municipalities. I, again, I'm on the budget committee, so I see the budgets, I see what it costs us all. But as many have said before me, the library serves our most vulnerable. Goffstown does not have a senior center, we do not have a community center. We have Stark Hall and the Mason's Lodge, which are overrun with requests from even Boy Scouts and Girl Scout groups. The library can be a safe place on a hot day, it has computer access to those without. We do have an unsheltered population in Goffstown. Excuse me. So yes, this, it will be a cost. It will be a variable cost, it's very hard to tell. I think New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank had, what, 74 cents per assessed thousand? So...
You have 10 seconds.
Thank you. As a voter, though, I do not choose to beggar our town in exchange for our most vulnerable's benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Barbara Schultz.
Hi, my name is Barbara Schultz. I live at 11 Honeysuckle Lane. I have, I'm not going to do as great a job speaking as some of the other people that just spoke, but I'm asking for your support in putting, I know this will be on the ballot, but recommending this to the voters. And there's many, many reasons. I use the library all the time, and it's invaluable to me. I don't want my taxes to go up either. I'm under the same financial crunches that everybody else is, but I'm willing to put my money towards something that I truly, truly value. And I think that if my taxes go up, this is probably going to be the best expenditure of my taxes in the 30 years that I've lived here. That's just my personal use of the library. I wanted to address some people that talk about this is not a good time, and I know that you, as a select board, recognize that, you know, you're here for your term, and you may be here more, you may not be, but you know that you're the caretaker for the long-term for Goffstown, and this is a long-term vision, this is a long-term thing. For those of people that spoke about not a good time, this started a long time ago. This just didn't start today. You know, we bought the land next to the library, thinking we would need an expansion back in 2009. There were surveys done in 2018, there was approved funding, and as far as community support, there's a lot of community support. I know this wasn't taxpayer money that was spent, but the town voted on two different occasions to spend $80,000, $90,000 to study the need for this. And I think that proves that the community wants this, and I encourage you to keep that in mind. I also want to mention that I have to give tremendous kudos to the staff that works on the conditions there. You know, there has been some turnover at the library, and I wonder if the conditions that they're working in has to affect that, their decision. If I were moving, I would be looking at what is the quality of the library. And if I were moving today, I would look at, Goffstown library, I would probably choose not to live here. It's an investment in our future, and it's going to be nothing but positive for the town. The need for the community space is huge. The need for the place to connect with other people in our community, to maybe have those conversations about how can we lower our taxes? Maybe we can have town-wide composting. Let's gather to talk about solar panels on the town hall. I mean, there's lots of reasons to need to connect, and the library is the best place to do it.
You have 10 seconds.
The plans for the, that after-hours space would be an enormous asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Hobbs.
Hello, everybody. My name is Frank Hobbs. I live at 119 Danus Park Road, Goffstown, New Hampshire. I've lived in Goffstown the majority of my life, and I currently serve on the Goffstown Budget Committee. I am, however, speaking as a private citizen tonight. While growing up in Goffstown throughout grade school, middle school, and high school, I often utilized the library. I have a library card today. While I was growing up, the library was literally the only place to check out books or research information. However, the times have changed. Today, a simple cell phone with internet access contains more information than the entire library. Access to information is not a problem. At the core, this is a question of need versus want. Does the library need upgrades? Absolutely, 100%. There has to be another, more fiscally responsible solution than dropping $7.2 million on the backs of the taxpayers, in my opinion. I've had many conversations with my neighbors, fellow residents, and the first question they ask me is, why are we spending $7.2 million when inflation is rising, when oil is rising, when food prices are going through the roof, gas, utilities, electricity? As a businessman, I've listened to the presentations, I've heard, and I've heard the reasons for spending $7.2 million as coffee with friends, place people can go, free tickets, access to information, access to the internet if financially troubled, children's activities, building relationships. We have that now. The difference, and the real question, is what is the additional benefit? Is it worth $7.2 million? I ask the select board to vote no, and thank you for your time.
Are there any residents that have not spoken that wish to speak? Can you come forward, please?
Sorry, I never saw the paper.
No, they went out earlier, so you may have missed it. So if you could just write your name and your address, and then provide that to the board.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Dolan, and I live at 356 Worthley Hill Road. And I guess, from what I can hear, we're hearing age, it's a little tricky in this room, but I want to add something. And what I want to, I'm an educator, and I work in the schools, and I see how many kids are struggling to read. The internet does not replace your ability to read. It can't. Reading is thinking about things. It's being able to communicate. It's being able to think about a bill that's being proposed, to be able to read it and understand it. And I'm not just talking about little children learning to read. I work at all ages, and kids are struggling at all ages. They can't pick out the main idea in a sentence. So what I'm saying is this, I know what's happening in the schools, I see the kids, but we need our community to celebrate reading. Diane does a great job, and don't throw those books away. We need kids to read them. I just read an article where it says a young child needs to read 1,000 books to be ready to learn to read. You know, you think, oh, 1,000 books, but if you read a book a day with your little kid, you're over 1,000, eh? But not everybody does it, and certainly not everybody can buy 1,000 books. But the library has it and gives it to people. And the bigger we make that, the more we are celebrating our culture, our democracy, our ability to self-govern. All these things depend on people being able to read. They have to be able to read. And yes, the library has done an amazing job updating, connecting people with internet, teaching people about the computer, and there's a lot of information on there. But it doesn't replace books. Books are how we learn to read. Young children with a lot of a computer experience, believe me, they know how to press those buttons. They can't read. They can't pick out the main idea in an article. It's not enough. The computer is not enough. And we need, as a community, to be celebrating those values. And I think the library is where that happens. And the more people we can bring in there to celebrate, enjoy, and learn together, get hooked on reading, the better our community will be, the better we will be able to go forward and work together for our future. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Melanie, come up, and then the gentleman in the back.
There's a lot of library bags over here. That was tricky. Thank you so much to the chair and to the board for having this public hearing and listening to the voices in the community. I only have three points.
Melanie, can you just keep your name and your address?
Thank you.
Name and the address.
My name is Melanie Renfro Hebert. I live at 23 College Road, Panardville, Goffstown. I live at 23 College Road, Panardville, Goffstown. Just making the distinction. We don't have a library out there either. So I just want to make three points. One is that there is no downside to adding additional resources and access to these resources to our community. Other communities have shown statistically towns with vibrant libraries that can serve the needs of their communities. The entire town benefits from that. Second, when we talk about limiting access by not being ADA compliant, by not having safe and secure facilities for the library, and for, ooh, I lost my third one. But those two are important enough. We're limiting access for members of our community who are also taxpayers. More importantly, we're limiting a valuable resource for individuals in the community that may be older, elderly, younger, or may have limited access to resources. In order to access things on the internet, you need to have internet and technology to reach it. The library provides that. It provides tools for learning for every member in our community. Personally, I think that's well worth $130 a year per thousand, or I believe. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you. My name is Brian Campbell. I live on 718 Back Mountain Road. I am in favor of the proposal and I'm also recommending that the board recommend the added money for the library. I think it's important for people to understand, there's been a lot of discussion about what do we get from the library, what are the benefits? And, you know, a lot of people have gone on and discussed that. But some points I'm just going to make that I didn't hear. Library is a really important source for local history. And not only history, but truthful history. The library is filled with educated and accomplished stewards of valuable and truthful information. Anyone can go on the internet, there's a computer on your phone, but there's nothing there preventing you from getting information that is no good. So you have people at the library that can help you. They work with educational sources, they work with educational institutions, and the information that you're getting there, you can trust is from a good source. I think that's very important. Libraries are not just a pile of books or a place where your kids can go and be having a storytime, but these are educational resources that are available to the entire community, students, adults, people who otherwise don't have internet access, or computers, or phones, or tablets. And you have a valuable resource there and a skilled librarian that could help you use those and help you get as much information from them as you can, and good information, repeating that. I think that's really important. Libraries are a source for a safe and healthy community. There's opportunities for, of course, the typical storytime. There's opportunities for young adults to form groups, committees. There's opportunities for adult readers, adult writers to form groups that inspire creativity, not just in reading or writing, but art, music, and others as well. I keep hearing the economy being brought up. A library is a huge benefit to the local economy. Not only do you have research in the town, demographics and such, but there's opportunities for businesses to form partnerships with other businesses. There's opportunities for local business owners to meet with other business owners.
You have 10 seconds.
I challenge those who are saying this is not the time to do this to say it is the time to do this. The economy's hurting, this helps the economy. And I challenge you to say you wouldn't do this in good economic times as well. I feel like the people that are saying it's the wrong time to do it are just going to come up with another excuse when the economy gets better.
Thank you. Are there any other residents wishing to speak?
Yeah. I'm Stan Chess, 58 Horizon Drive, Goffstown. And when I was younger, I used the library. I had a daughter, my granddaughter, she had a speech, she had a learning, a little bit of learning disability. So we used the library, but we had to pay for a tutor. But the library was the place that she was at. When she got into high school, I mean, grade school, now she uses the school system. And she was always in a off-class for, you know, to help. And now she's in, she's 13 years old, and through the school and working with her at home, her parents and us, as grandparents, we have got her back online. Every school has a library. Every school has teachers in there. And I disagree with have $7.2 million for a library right now. It's, I'm ready to retire, two years ago. But I can't because I've saved 401K, I've saved all my money, I've saved everything I can. But it's getting harder and harder because the taxes keep going up. Last year went up $800. Oil went up double. Electricity doubled. Food doubled, okay? It's taken everybody's time out. And, you know, everybody gets up and says, oh, yeah, the library. Well, if everybody wants to use the library, then start a fund. The people that use the library the most, have them pay for it. Start a fund, you know? I mean, it's not everybody that uses libraries anymore. But, you know, there's some wealthy people in Goffstown, I'm sure that maybe they'll give you a grant. Maybe they'll loan you the money. Or you can start funding with the people, start charging more for the library. I don't, but $7.2 million right now is just, it's totally, I think it's the wrong time and it's the wrong thing to do right now. Utilize what you have in the schools. The schools are open, they got afternoon, they got after-school, they got parks and rec. And, you know, there's lots of other opportunity for kids that don't have internet and stuff, so. I just wanted to let you know that I disagree with the $7.2 million. It's just too much.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other residents wishing to speak?
If you've spoken once.
Well, I want to give an opportunity, under the board's rules, all residents have an opportunity to speak once.
Lene Peterson, 26 First Avenue. We've talked a lot about the educational resources at the library. One of the large items that they're talking about is meeting space. If you go online right now, you can look up and find article after article after article about our loneliness epidemic, about people isolated, about people unable to connect with other people. This kind of space is critical to begin to chip away at that kind of loneliness. If you have a space that doesn't have a restroom that somebody like me can get into, you can't go there. If you've got a space that doesn't have enough room for me to maneuver, I can't go there. Trying to get down to this meeting was incredibly difficult. I think you need to think about what the space can do in terms of connecting people to people throughout the community. I use Pathika, I use other things. I'm very active at St. Matthews and other places in town. And I meet people and they're great. But if I want to have a meeting, there isn't much option of where I can go for that. If I want to sit down and have a conversation with a group of people, there isn't much option. If you've got a space like that, we can begin to talk to one another. Yes, it's hard. Everything has gone up. There's no guarantee it will go down 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, or 30 years from now. We can only make a decision on what we can do now. Maybe we should have done it last year when things were cheaper. Who knows? But I don't have a crystal ball and I can't tell you things are going to be cheaper five years from now. So, thank you, and I would appreciate it if you'd support the board here.
Thank you. Are there any non-residents? I guess, last call for any residents that haven't spoken.
Hi, I'm Suriel. I'm 46 Kimberly Lane. I'm a former trustee and I ask for the support on this. I don't think people realize how many people get turned away because we don't have the space at the library. We can't offer as much programs as we want to. We don't have a community space. I don't want to pay an extra $130 either. But I also am still paying for all these kids to be attending our schools and I don't have kids in school anymore. So, I mean, it's somebody that anybody can go to the library, attend the events, and I think it's, there's never going to be a good time and it's a lot of money, but I do ask for support.
Thank you. Non-residents. Are there any non-residents wishing to speak?
One more resident, yeah.
Oh, there's one more resident? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Anthony Summers with 233 Elm Street. And I am opposed to this library. Those who are saying that it's going to be upwards of $130 a year, it's more like $400 a year if you do the math correctly. Secondly, I do construction, so the ADA that they're talking about, the ADA compliance does not cost $7.2 million. It's probably around $20,000 if you were to do the math correctly. We just do not have $7.2 million. The taxpayers' money, there's just no way. With oil prices and groceries and the costs it gets, the costs it takes to get us to work every day, we just do not have it to put into a library. We could put it towards something else. Thank you.
Are there any non-residents wishing to speak?
I'm a resident.
Oh, okay. Do we have any other residents?
My name is Elizabeth Gipson.
I'm sorry, ma'am, can you wait till you get to the microphone so we can record it?
Oh, sorry. My name is Elizabeth Gipson. I live at 174 North Mast in Goffstown. I understand people's concerns about cost. I think we need to do long-term thinking about cost. If we have a better library, our property values will go up. If we have a better library, we will be able to continue to support the wonderful staff that we have. If we have a better library, we will all be better off in the long run. Inflation is a real thing. As someone else has said, it's not going to reverse. We should have paid for this earlier. We're better off if we pay for it now rather than waiting. I urge your support.
Thank you. Are there any other residents?
Hello. I'm Judy Lanza, Representative Lanza, 21 Bayberry Lane, Goffstown. I agree with everybody saying the cost is so much. But at the same time, if we keep waiting, the longer that we wait, the higher the price is going to go up more. And I think we need to think about what it has, can bring to Goffstown. It can bring a lot of good things, between community involvement, also letting the children have the resources that are needed to be able to. Because not all children have the availability to go out and use internet within their homes. So to come there and to have that, to increase space. We could also have these community functions in the evening to increase, again, I think, our community involvement. You know, because I think it's so important to make sure that everybody is included in this. You know, not only children, but adults as well. And I think that we just, yes, it's a huge cost and I understand that. But the longer that we wait, the price goes up even more. And I think that the library has done some great things. I know my children all use the library. I know they've all grown up. But I've been here in Goffstown for 30 years. And our library, we've outgrown our library. When we look at the library, we've outgrown it. It's a beautiful building, it's a historical building. But we need to have a bigger place to allow for more people to come into it and not to feel like, you know, the parking and this and everything. We need to make sure that we can grow Goffstown and that people can go, come to our community and go, oh my God, that's the library. That's Goffstown. Because I know I've gone to other places, Hookset, I've gone to Bedford. They have wonderful, and why can't we have a great library too? And why can't we make sure that this is on the article, the Warren article, and make sure that you vote yes for this, okay? Very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any residents? No? Any non-residents wishing to speak? Do you want to... Does anybody want to come up one more time? And say something different? I mean, just don't come up and reiterate the same thing. Maybe you want to counteract something somebody else has said. And you're still limited to three minutes.
I will keep it. Okay. Laura Stevens, 33 Orchard Hill, still speaking as a resident and a librarian. I have a couple of points that actually speak directly to what some people have concerns about. Schools are not in competition with, nor are they the same as public libraries. Also, there's a good part of the population that is not in school. And those people deserve access to books and learning as well. Also, as the community grows, all the services need to grow. This is true for fire and police. This is true for the services that libraries provide. As many people have said, the town has grown, the library has not, and it's only suitable that it would match. And I know a lot of the things that people have mentioned have seemed like nicey-nicey floofy and people don't want to spend $7.2 million for nicey-nicey floofy. However, it's just, it's those things that build a strong community over time. It's not just meeting a friend for coffee. It's the over time that community being strong, the strongest communities do have the strongest libraries. If you look at the ALA website, Pew Research Center, even the New Hampshire State Library statistics, you'll see a matchup. And the investment now is a long-term investment in an entity that you know will grow and change and acclimate as society does and as societies' needs do. We've done it for years already and libraries will continue to do it. So think of it maybe in that way. Also, during the recession, yes, of course, nobody wants taxes to go up. But this is especially when people feel so tight in their spending that the population that needs it the most, needs it the most. So let's... So, let's, the idea of investing in that now, in the library as an entity, will serve our town for years to come in a positive way. That's how libraries connect with towns, and that's what studies have shown when it comes to this type of building and information access.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there somebody else? Go ahead.
Mr. Mazur?
Mr. Mazur.
I'll make a question. So, Brian Mazur, 39 Shirley Park Road, Goffstown. I just want to share this verbally, is that the current proposed library bond, you guys can correct my, correct my math here, but it's approximately 25%, sorry, 27% of our current town default budget. So, 27% increase, just that bond alone. And then, secondly, I didn't hear anything about the long-term operating budget impact to our budget. There's going to be additional staffing, salaries, utilities, that's also going to increase our budget. So, if someone can address that as well, that'd be great, because to me, I just keep on seeing tax rate going up and up and up, and, and again, I'm not getting anti-library, it's just, I don't see the benefits to it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Lauren, come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for indulging me. Lauren Dukas, 23 Ginger Drive, still speaking, in my own opinion, and not a representative of anything. I just, I'm sure the board remembers, but I forgot to mention, the latest numbers from the library, from January of 2022 to August of 2022, had 74,000 items checked out in those eight months. It had an average of just over 3,000 visitors per month, and in a town of 18,500, that's substantial. I was blown away by those figures when we got them from the librarians, and I think that speaks to, perhaps the select board would want to take those numbers into consideration when thinking about its recommendation and the scope of how many people currently take advantage of our wonderful library, and how many more would then be able to as well. Thank you very much.
Ma'am? Go ahead, no. Go ahead.
Oh, me?
You. Again, make sure you say your name and address.
My name is Sally Booth, and I live on 40 Ashlard Row. And I just wanted to, I want to speak for old people. I have come to accept that that is a category that I'm in. And there's been a lot of talk about children, and I have nothing against children, I have a couple of them, but I'm old. And the library makes a tremendous difference in my life, and in my husband's life, who isn't speaking, but he, he agrees with me in everything.
Whether he wants to or not, right?
Yeah, that's right. One of the things that we benefit by is being able to get books from the library that we would never be able to, to buy or to purchase. In other words, we can get, we can put in a request for a particular book, and we get it. Not necessarily the next day, but we do get it. And it makes a big difference in our life. I'm sorry, I'm a little out of breath with the excitement of all of this. But I think that's an important thing to keep in mind, that this is a resource for older adults, and people have talked about the extent to which many older adults are very isolated and have few, have little access to various resources. And the library provides that, and I think it's an important thing to keep in mind. So, it'll surprise you, I know, to hear that I recommend that you approve this request. Thank you very much.
Come on up.
My name is Harrison Spaltough. I live at 75 Elm Street, and I was looking at the numbers of the Goffstown and Pinnardville population, and I also was looking at the amount of cardholders that the library had in 2021. There's about 7,000 cardholders in 2021, 2021 at the library. There's 22,000 residents when you combine Goffstown and Pinnardville. That's about 3% of the population. Now, I think what we, no, is my mic wrong? I apologize. Sorry about that. Well, that's a third of the population. That's a, that's a, this is a significant number, I'm not going to lie. So, but the fact of the matter is, I think what we need to do is, we need, someone brought up how Goffstown is growing, right? We now have affordable housing that's coming into Goffstown, more people are moving in. We have more businesses moving into the village as well. I'm at the, at my mom's shop all the time, people are coming in. I've never seen the village like this before, it's so vibrant, businesses are coming in. If we increase the tax rate with a $7.2 billion, million dollar project, the, the growth of Goffstown is going to go away. And in high school, a lot of my friends, we were not visiting the library. If we, we needed to research something, we just went on Google. We can still do that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Last call.
I haven't spoken yet.
Where you been?
I just got here. I was actually watching online.
Okay, you need to say your name and your address.
My name's Kylie Cooley. I live at 27 Heather Hill Lane in Goffstown. I've been a member here my whole life. I've lived here, and I've grown up with my little sister. I'm totally against this, not for it. When I was a kid, I barely used the library. I would use my school libraries, and this goes for a lot more kids that I went to school with. I drive by, I barely see anybody in the parking lot, and I live near town. I can hear the commentary.
Yeah, there's still everybody talking in the background, okay? There are a lot of talk.
Anyways, I can access books on my phone as much more people of my generation can, and I totally don't see the point of this. My parents are 55, and they struggle to pay their tax bills, and I think it's absurd. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, everybody. Frank Hobbs, 119 Dennis Park Road. I'll speak fast. I want to speak for all the middle-aged parents out there. I have a four-year-old daughter who's going to be growing up in Goffstown. She loves the library. I love the library. This is an issue that should not be dividing our community. The question is, the difference between what we have now to what the perceived benefit of adding $7.2 million. So, let's talk about the real cost. It's not just $7.2 million, there's bond interest. What's the bond interest? Seven-ish percent? It's $50,000 a year. Additional staff, salaries, what's the largest part of our budget? Salaries and benefits, right? Those are long-term commitments. And with the library, we're not talking all or none. A lot of the benefits that I've heard tonight, we have now, and we're thankful, and I'm thankful that we have the staff at the library and Diane to do that. I am. So, 99% are some of the benefits that I've already heard, we already have. And in closing, this, I don't, I just don't see it as a, a need. I see it as a want.
Thanks, Frank. You already had one. You've already been up twice.
No, no, Barbara hasn't.
Oh, I thought Barbara had already been up twice. Come on, come on up. Oh, it was the one, the mask threw me off.
Barbara Schultz, 11 Honeysuckle Lane. I just want to address, several people have mentioned the staffing, and perhaps increased operating costs due to staffing. The comprehensive information on the library website regarding the building addition has stated clearly that they anticipate keeping the staffing at the same level. So, I just want everyone to be aware of that, and I, again, recommend that you pass this.
Thank you. Going once, going twice? Oh, I got one more.
How you doing, folks? Ken Cooley, 27 Heather Hill Lane. Of all the years to push this agenda, I guess you would call it, or proposal, whatever you want to call it, I think this is like the absolute worst time to do it. With the way everybody's struggling right now between, like everybody else said before, taxes, fuel, food, what's going to come next? We still got the fire department to look at, we got the police department to look at, we've got DPW. Do we know what those numbers are yet? No, we have no idea. So, to throw this on the, on the ballot, to, you know, recommend it, I think it's a bad idea. $7.2 million plus interest? Figure out the numbers.
Thank you.
I, I got to say one other thing, though. I think there is probably another way, that they could probably shrink this addition down to make it not $7.2 million.
Thank you.
Again, it's the backs.
Well, if you would have got earlier, you would have got front seat.
I understand. Melanie Renfro Hebert, 23 College Road, Goffstown. And I just would like to say that I have really appreciated hearing all of the comments about the library staff and how much they've been able to add and the value they've added to the community. And I'm listening, and I'm hearing people say they can continue to add that value, and I'm here to say that they have told us they cannot. They cannot add additional value to our library without support from our community to provide the space and to provide those services. So, I'm a little distressed by the fact that our community is saying, "We love the library, we enjoy the library," but they've been doing so much with so little for so long that they can just keep doing that. It's distressing. Again, I support the library. I'm hopeful that this select board will give their recommendation for the funding. And I didn't disclose before, I'm also the chair of the Budget Committee for Goffstown. I'm also on the trustee of the trust funds, the chair for the trustee of the trust funds, and I'm on the Economic Development Committee, so I just didn't disclose that last time. Thank you.
Good luck. Bear?
Richard Bear Freeman, 111 Tarrell Hill Road. I wasn't going to come up and talk it a second time, because a lot of things have already been said. But what I've heard is that the library needs a new bathroom, needs an ADA accessible, needs... Is there a joke in that?
No.
It needs more storage space. I don't think storage space or bathroom and accessibility is $7.2 million. Just my opinion. You need them, you need them items, let's get that, don't expand. And I was under the impression that that building was donated, the library to the town?
Years ago.
Yes, and what is, what is the contingency on that building if it's not a library?
Diane, Diane might have some more information on that.
If it's not a library?
Yes. Does that go back to the family?
That's, goes into a whole new detail, but that's, it's not something that's going to go away, right?
What I'm saying is, if we expanded, are we giving a family a new building? That's what I'm getting at.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to have Diane come up, just give a little history if you can, Diane. No? I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't have the info.
You are putting me on the spot, but...
So, this is Diane Hathaway, the library director. I don't think that's what this is all about.
Thank you so much. I am a non-resident, just for full disclosure. I do not live in Goffstown, but I've served Goffstown for 24 years as the library director. The land that the library is on was donated to the town. The deed is that that property remain a library. The building is owned by the town, so that's the history as far as the building is concerned. And the building was paid for by taxpayer money back in 1909, and I can't quite recall the cost, but it was under $20,000 to build that library back in the day. It's a beautiful space. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. The library trustees have spent a lot of time and effort to maintain the historical integrity of that building. It was considered at the time to be the gem of this community, and it remains that way as far as the architecture goes. I don't know how much...
That's it, that's good.
Okay, good.
That answers Bear's question.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody else? Go right ahead, sir.
Joseph Cameron from 31 Mill Road in Goffstown. Cameron. So, different from, like, from, from, from the federal government, we can't print money, so again, it's got to come from the taxpayers. A suggestion that I, you know, that, that I haven't heard anybody make is that there can be grants that, that you can obtain for, you can also get donations from outside sources to also accomplish this, and there, and there are people who have money that would do things like that. So, I make that recommendation.
Thank you. One more call. Anybody else? Go right ahead. You're bringing up new information, I have questions, right?
Yeah, just Kathy Coughlin, 83 New Boston Road. The library, so this is kind of me speaking, kind of sort of librarian foundation-wise. We are looking to bond the whole project, however, we are looking for grants. We formed a foundation to privately raise funds, and that is actively happening. So, we do want to be doing some fundraising and looking for other revenue streams. However, grants and certain things like that need to show community support, and so having the bond passed will actually help us achieve getting some of those grants. If we were to delay and wait for us to raise a quarter, half, more, that price of that project, because of inflation, is going to go higher and higher and higher. You know, the cost, the original cost was much lower, but we are, we already are working with a construction management firm, and they gave us updated numbers based on current cost, and so that's why there's that price differential. So, I did want people to know that we are working on those other avenues, that we're, we are trying to mitigate those costs as much as possible. And I would also encourage anybody who's not sure, you know, this isn't $7.2 million for a bathroom. There's so much more into this building. We have the cost broken down by each, each function of the, all the construction costs broken out, and come to a listening session, see the, see the drawings, ask questions of the architect. You know, we want to get those, the input and not just say, "It's, it's a recession, it's too much money, there's other projects," because there's always going to be other project, our project, we have the numbers to back it up, and we are ready to go. So, I am looking for everybody's support. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call, and I'm going to close the public hearing.
I think Samantha was, as a petitioner.
Go ahead, Samantha.
You knew you were going to hear from me again. Samantha Holman, 3 Honeysuckle Lane, and I'm also the chairperson for the Goffstown Public Library Board of Trustees. So, the people who have spoken here in this room tonight all have very valid concerns, and I hear them, I understand them, I know that it's a lot of money. I'm a taxpayer too, and I don't want to pay $7.2 million. I don't want to see my tax bill reflect that either. But I do want to address a few questions. Time will not reduce the cost of this project. This project has been in the works for years, and time has told us that it doesn't reduce the cost of the project. In fact, the project costs, without making any changes to the plans at all, have gone up over $1 million, just because we've waited. The cost of labor isn't going to decrease if we wait. I hope that my fellow taxpayers and the select board understand that our intent is not to saddle you with a $7.2 million bond and wash our hands of this. Voting in favor of this will allow us to begin the project as we continue to fundraise and apply for grants that will offset the bond payments. In fact, not, this article not passing actually prevents us from applying for grants that could award us up to $1 million. If we don't have money to show support, we can apply for certain grants that could take millions off of the cost of this project. So, I want the board and taxpayers to understand that as a trustee, this enables us to move forward, but it also inspires us to take a ruthless approach to fundraising. We understand it's a lot of money. We're taxpayers too. But I believe this community deserves the kind of services and resources that towns like Hookset, Milford, Exeter, and Bedford can offer their residents. Goffstown is a growing community that deserves a library that can continue to serve it at an award-winning level. And if there are any outstanding questions, I would encourage you to attend trustee meetings. They are the first and third Wednesday of every month. We'll hold further listening sessions that the public is welcome to attend. We want your feedback. That's why we host the listening sessions, whether you're in favor of the, the project or opposed to it. We want to hear your feedback. You can also email the trustees at trustees@trustees.com. You can also email the trustees at trustees@goffstownlibrary.com. Or if you'd like to meet, we're happy to meet with you. I'll meet you at Apothica, we can have a cup of coffee, and I'll listen to your concerns and get your feedback. I'd love to have it. Two outstanding questions that I didn't get to address. The subject of cardholders came up. 7,000 cardholders, the system is purged every three years, so that's not total cardholders in the history of the library. The system purges every three years, so that's 7,000 cardholders in the last two years. And then staffing and utilities. The project was designed in such a way that we would not have to add additional staff. The staff workspaces where they're located will allow the staff to maintain the current staffing levels and level of service. And then utilities, obviously that's not something that we can give an exact figure on, but the building is designed to be energy efficient, and it has a flat roof to allow for future solar panels, so that we could help reduce the energy costs in the addition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Okay, that'll conclude the public hearing. I'll thank you all for attending. And again, this will be held again tomorrow night at the Budget Committee. They'll be holding budget talks tomorrow night at the Craig Eber Auditorium, 6 o'clock. And that'll be on the whole budget, not just this particular item. Thank you.
Peter, when are you voting on this?
Not this Monday, the following, next Monday, the following.
On the 23rd.
23rd, yeah.
Right. Yes, son, they'll review the entire warrant at that time.
Thank you.
So this group will vote on the...
On the 23rd, when they, when they receive the budget back from the Budget Committee, and when they review their other warrant articles, yes.
Do you wanna take a five-minute recess?
Sure.
So if you could just announce it until...
We're gonna take a, we're gonna take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back at...
7:50.
Yeah, 7:50. 8:50, yeah, 7:50.
It's something that's become more popular lately with, you know, kids from elementary through high school age. And putting one into Barnard Park would give that, um, that ability for kids to play that type of game at Barnard Park where they otherwise wouldn't be able to.
Okay. What is the, the pro- what's the process of what you have to do?
So, as a, um, for my Eagle project, I need to plan and organize the fundraising and, um, you know, installation of the Eagle project. And tonight, what I'm looking for is the approval from the Select Board to move forward with that. I've met with, um, Mr. Wilhelmie, the Parks and Rec Director, as well as the Board of Commissioners for the Parks and Recreation Department, and they've all been in support of it. So, I was looking to you for the last step I need from the town to proceed with the project.
Okay. Anybody got any questions?
So, it sounds a little bit like organized chaos.
Yeah.
Within a confined area.
Yeah.
That I think, looks like it lends itself to different age groups. It sounds like young and old alike.
Yeah.
To benefit from this. It sounds great, and I've heard of it before, believe it or not. I think it's a great idea personally. I encourage you to move forward with it.
You got a thumbs up from Rick?
Yeah, and you guys as Select Board members can use it for a night if you so choose.
Oh, yeah.
Like an exciting adventure.
Put you in the middle, put you in the middle.
Just trying to get everybody involved.
Can we have uniforms?
We can do that if you want.
Can I, Peter, so Stuart, what's your timeline?
So, I'm looking to, um, build the project. I've, um, looking to do it during the month of April. That's when the construction would take place. It shouldn't take the full month, but that's just the amount of time I've given, depending on the volunteers that I can get to move forward with the construction on that.
See if I could follow up. What? And so it's, there're wooden walls, if I understand it correct. And what if it's surface, a gravel surface inside?
Yes, so I'm looking to put in, um, something similar to like knit pack, so have a fine gravel that can be packed down.
And what would it require for maintenance?
So, for maintenance, the, um, walls themselves would be pressure-treated lumber, which would, you know, reduce the amount of maintenance needed. And beyond that, it would be the same as any other, you know, outdoor wooden structure in the town, the picnic benches.
Then the knit pack, I assume you just rake it over once in a while, smooth it out?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get an idea on how much ongoing maintenance it would require from the Parks and Rec Department, but that's very helpful, thank you.
Anybody else? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we allow the Barnard Park Gaga Pit Eagle Scout Project to proceed forward at this time, starting in April.
That's the construction, yes.
Construction in April.
I'll second that motion.
Dega, two seconds.
You've got four, man.
Pick one. Collis, you were asking all the questions. Motion by Mark, seconded by Collis. Any discussion? Any more questions? On favor?
Aye.
All right. Post, abstaining, motion passes. You're good.
Great, thank you.
Stuart, who would your first challenge be? You know, like, challenge someone for the inaugural game, right? Who's your challenge?
Rick, Rick's up there. I'll do it.
Kelly, Kelly, you're going in. Kelly, you're going in.
Next up is highway safety recommendations.
Yes, Tab 8.
Come right up.
Good evening. Hopefully I'll be quick. Okay, Mr. Chair, good evening, everyone. So, we'll go through them real fast. Um, I'll do the first one, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, the crosswalk at Pine Ridge.
Yep.
That one works for you. So, that one, the Highway Safety Committee met, they talked about the, um, the crosswalk at, uh, South Mass and, um, Pine Ridge. The concern was that, um, there's a bus stop there, there are people that cross at that intersection, uh, during the morning, um, traffic, um, commute. The requestor had asked us to, um, put lights up on that crosswalk, similar to what you're seeing on Henry Bridge, um, when you go past Irving Station, the crosswalk there. Based on the traffic study, based on the highway safeties, uh, conversation, we recommended that, um, there would be no action taken. The current crosswalk is, um, has all the, the needed signs, the appropriate signs, has, actually has crosswalk signs, um, pointing down to it, down the street on each side. The painting is compliant with the MUTCD. Um, the only other thing that Adam had mentioned is that when they start to do some upcoming roadwork, they can re-evaluate the signage itself, but there was, we didn't feel there's any need to add lights to that. I did mention during that meeting that I could talk to, reach out maybe to the school district to kind of see if there was an idea of why the kids are crossing throughout the morning to get to the other side for the crosswalk rather than wait, took to the other side for the, for the bus stop, rather than wait for the bus to kind of get there, put the lights up, and then cross. If any of you have ever had the luxury of driving down South Mass at 7:50 in the morning, you'll see that traffic is bumper to bumper for about 15 minutes, so, um, that one is what, we, we recommended, uh, no action.
Do you want to take these up one at a time?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, take a motion. Any questions, first off? See you none, you got a motion? The motion is not to recommend a mo-
No action.
No action to be taken.
I make the motion at this time from the recommendation of the committee that the vote be to recommend no action taken at this time.
One second.
Motion by Mark, seconded by Kelly. Any discussion? See you none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post, abstaining, motion passes. And the next one?
The next one is, um, Mountain Road. This is up by Perennials, way up on top of the mountain. A resident up there, um, is concerned that when she leaves her driveway, it's kind of a, a blind corner. She feels that cars are driving by her driveway, are coming around that corner too fast, that when she pulls out of her driveway, she doesn't have enough time, um, to pull out, or the cars don't have enough time to slow down and stop, um, if they come around the corner and see her pulling out. We sent up, and I'll say his name, Officer Patton, who did a phenomenal investigation on this. He was able to determine, uh, using some, uh, math equations that they have been taught through their, uh, traffic reconstruction school, that in fact, uh, based on the distance and the timing and the speeds, um, that even if somebody was doing about 50 miles an hour up in that area, at the extreme end, that they'd still have enough time to reactionary, uh, um, sight and then hitting the brakes, they would still have time to stop before they hit her driveway. So, based on that, the highway safety, uh, concluded that we, we didn't think that there needed to be a, uh, slow driveway, a slowdown sign, or a slow driveway, a head sign. We wanted to kind of further look at the corner itself. There is no, uh, speed limit sign in that area, which is a 35. So, uh, one thing that we talked about was having, um, one of our officers get with the engineer at DPW and conduct a ball bank, which is a device that hangs in the car, and as you turn the corner, it'll show you the speed of what the recommend, you know, the, the safety speed of it is. So, um, we were looking at, instead of putting that sign up for a slowdown or a blind driveway head, it's actually a advisory sign, um, based on that ball bank study of, you know, 25 mile an hour sharp curve, that type of sign. So, we recommended no action for her recommend, her, um, ask of the, uh, slow, uh, sign ahead or the, you know, the blind driveway sign ahead, but we would like to do a little bit more on that intersection and that, that curve to, to see if it needs an advisory sign instead.
So, you're looking for a motion to not put up a driveway, slow driveway sign, but to continue the, yes, investigation on, um, potential speeding or potential signing?
And I would ask if the board sees fit that once that information, uh, comes and we, and we determine that there should be an advisory sign, that you allow us to do that without coming back here.
Okay.
There is a, uh, horse crossing sign in that same area, and she seems to think there's, hasn't been any horses crossing that area in years, so we're canvassing the neighborhood to see if in fact there are horses crossing. And the, the thought process is, if there are none, we would just change that sign with another advisory sign, so.
But there is somebody around the street that has horses. They may not ride up there, though.
So, that was the, the question is, do they come down the street and then go up into the, their, behind Perennials, there's that-
Right.
-that trail that goes up to the mountain. So, we were trying to figure out if that horse crossing sign is actually still relevant or not.
Okay. Collis, did you have questions?
Well, thanks for answering my curiosity, what the heck is a ball bank? But it sounds like a pendulum.
Yeah. I haven't seen it, but Adam tells me it, it, it's, it goes in the car, and as you turn corners, it'll tell you, um, basically, there's a, an equation that how fast you're going, how the, the, how the pendulum spins, is what the recommended safety speed is around that corner.
Cool. Um, I guess, the concern I have is slowdown. What does slowdown mean? Slowdown to what, first of all? Second of all, how would you enforce against that? How would you tell somebody, has slowed down enough?
Right.
As opposed to, I think you're talking about the yellow advisory speed signs that-
They'll say like 25, 20-
They aren't really enforceable as speed limit signs.
No.
But their advisor is the safe speed.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what I thought you meant.
Okay, motion?
Motion at this time to take no action, uh, pending further study, uh, from the DPW engineer and the Police Department work together to come up with a, a plan.
That cover it?
And to put up the sign.
And authorize them to take action.
If we determine that it-
Right.
That ball bank is, yeah.
You got that, Gail? Okay. Motion by Mark, seconded by Jim?
Yep.
Did you second that, too? I thought you did. Uh, any questions? It's, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post, abstaining, motion passes.
I'm sorry, I can never put a ball bank in my car and drive around town.
That's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
We finish everything in the-
No, there's still some items in the Town Administrator's Report.
Let's finish that.
Um, and if, if it's okay with the board, can we move to Item H?
Sure.
That is the Invest, uh, New Hampshire Municipal Per Unit Grant Program, and Joanne Duffy, the, uh, Planning and Economic Development Director is here, and I asked her to, uh, come up and, and speak to this as well. Uh, right now, uh, the state of New Hampshire through the Governor's Office has, uh, many different programs, uh, to spur the development of housing and affordable housing throughout New Hampshire. One of them is the Per Unit Grant Program, where, um, communities are eligible to receive $10,000 per unit for creation of new eligible, uh, affordable housing, uh, with up to $1 million per project and a cap of $1 million per municipality. Uh, the Governor's Office has set aside $100 million, uh, for this, uh, program, um, and if awarded, there are no restrictions on the use of this fund. Um, the, you have in your packet at page 62, if you look at the bottom right corner, you have a letter from Dakota Partners, Jeremy Vieira, who is here this evening, uh, and can, uh, perhaps, if you'd like, uh, speak further on it. They've, uh, outlined some of the cost, um, issues that they have run into due to COVID-19. Um, so I guess there'd be two questions, um, for the board of, um, would you allow the town to apply for these grant applications and then partner with Dakota Partners, um, to assist them in the development of these housing units?
Okay. Bring them up, one.
Yeah, you want, Joanne and Jeremy, you want to speak to?
Here.
Joanne Duffy, Planning and Economic Development Director.
Jeremy Vieira, the Development Director at Dakota Partners.
V.I.E.I.R.A. The farmer.
Let me get my license out, look. And?
Penn Lindsay, also with Dakota Partners.
Okay. So, Joanne, you want to start?
Yes, so, um, the planning board had approved of this project of 74 units. All but 11 units are affordable. Um, based on your income, they can go as low as, uh, 30%. Um, so they're much lower than most affordable units out there. Um, so they would like to apply for this grant, or they would like the town to apply for this grant on behalf of the developer, because they're having some issues with financing due to COVID and the loss of, um, their bids. They had to go to the, put it out to bid again, or not put it out to bid again, but they lost the bids that they had due to COVID, and then they had to scramble and try to find. Um, so they wound up finding one company and then lots of subcontractors to fill in. So, they're, they're having some difficulties. The project is, is under construction currently. There's one building that has the, um, framing finished, and the other one has the foundation in. Uh, there's a total of 74 units. The, it's phased, but it's not phased for construction, it's only phased for financing purposes. So, the first phase has 31 affordable units, and the second phase will have 32. Jeremy, do you have anything?
Yeah, so we're, the total project is 74, 63 of those are affordable. Um, as per this application, you're allowed to apply for $10,000 per affordable unit. Thus, we, for the question to, to apply for $630,000. Um, as Joanne said, this project is, well, it's actually well, it's moved up a lot since the last time you were up there. So, we're actually at 60% completion, which is really nice. We have a, um, there are about seven buildings with studs up, um, and then another three foundations that have gone in, so we're out of a total of, uh, 13 buildings. So, we're making a lot of great progress out there, roughly about 60% on Phase 1, about 20% completion of Phase 2. Um, in COVID, this is probably the most difficult. We closed in, uh, the middle of 2021 on Phase 1, probably the most difficult time to build anything, uh, in the last couple decades. Um, so, as part of, for various reasons that are outlined in the letter, and that, uh, Joanne indicated, the, the project has hit some severe financial issues, um, and severe cost overruns, and the way this project, or this grant is structured, it's channeled through the municipality, so the municipality has the choice to, which project to select. If there's multiple affordable housing projects, there's only a million dollar cap, so it can determine who gets it and who does not. I believe we're the only ones applying for it, um, in Gostown at this time, um, and we wouldn't need all, but there'd still be about, uh, 470, I'm sorry, $370,000 available that you could allocate out to any other affordable project that came up. Uh, but we're asking that the, the, uh, municipality apply on our behalf, the application, we give that, really only to put the application in. Once we get approved, then those funds, we work with municipalities, channel those funds via loan, or however it needs to be structured. Um, that bit is a little bit unclear from BEA, exactly how those funds get structured, BEA being the grant issuing agency. Um, and once those are issued, we work, of course, with you guys to figure out how to, how to move in the project. Again, probably, likely to be in the form of some sort of forgivable loan or something of that, of that ilk, but until we put the application in and get a little bit more guidance from BEA, we wouldn't know the specifics around that.
I also included in your, um, or Derek included in the packet, a list of the monies that the project has paid to the town, um, such as certain fees, like, as, as an example, um, they've paid 181,000 in off-site improvement fees, and that was scheduled to go towards the improvements of Pleasant and Main. Um, the project had initially, this, this project has a history, goes back many, many years, and, uh, at the time that the town was to receive the monies, it was decided that they would hold on to it in a fund until they were ready, the town was ready, to make those improvements. So, but that money has been received. Um, we also have fees that are, um, impact fees in the amount of 285,714 dollars, 185,000 for connection fees for water, $370,000 for sewer fee accessibility fees, $28,000 in building permits. So, they have, um, either paid or will be paying a substantial amount of money. The other thing that they're providing is a grassy, um, walking trail, five-foot-wide walking trail through the property for any residents to use, and by deed, the trail will be maintained by Dakota, so, you know, it's not just a grassy trail that will grow up and, and no one will ever know that it's there, that it will be maintained. Um, so, those are some of the things that, that they've provided as part of this whole approval.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Joanne, I just want to clarify, are there currently any other projects in Gostown that would qualify for this grant?
At the moment, we don't have any that would qualify based on the requirements for the affordable housing, um, but we do have some projects in the works, but they have not included affordable housing in, in the, uh, equation, so they have not applied.
And, uh, thank you. And what would our responsibility be as the grant holder? Is it just the receival of funds and then?
So, the town would receive the funds, and then you would need to work with the developer to find out what exactly you would be doing with those funds. The developer is requesting that they use the funds towards the project. The town would need to decide how that would work.
And does the, the gra- I, I did see, you know, more of the information, but do we have to put specifics on this project in the grant? In so, that we're kind of entering into an agreement?
Yes, there's an application that, um, I think Derek included, or-
It's in here, yeah.
You have, I think you have the grant, uh, guidelines I did not provide to the board, with the full grant that, um, Joanne's been working on.
Oh, okay.
Um, but I can provide that to you electronically.
I'm just curious what our obligations are at, at that point. Um, and then afterwards, do we have any sort of reporting requirements or anything within a certain timeframe?
No, the only thing that it says so far is that the town would, if, if it was qualified and, and approved, that the town would receive the funding, and they could do what they wanted to with it, basically. There is, um, Derek had mentioned there would be an audit required.
So, it, it's unclear, when we met with BE, uh, BEA last week, uh, they felt strongly that these were state funds, not subject to single audit for federal funds. However, the funds initiated as part of the COVID money, the 1.25 billion dollars that was provided to the state for COVID relief, and these funds are one of the programs that were developed. So, um, to be safe, we anticipate that it would, um, receipt of these funds would contribute to the need of potentially a single audit. Anytime the town, uh, uses $750,000 of federal funds, uh, we have to add that as an additional item, uh, on our annual audit. So, there is the potential of that. BEA is still working on guidance on that specific issue, um, and, uh, they said they should have an answer, um, to that pretty soon, and again, we were double-checked with the town auditor on that as well.
So, um, I read through this, this is kind of unique, I've never seen one of these come before, but I guess my question is fairly simple and straightforward. What is the town's exposure or liability in a worst-case scenario, say the developer walks away? What's our, what is our exposure to it?
Well, if the developer walks away, it's private property. We do have some bonds that we're holding, um, for, or I should say surety, that we're holding for the roadway, um, but the property is private property, so I doubt that the town would do anything with it. I, I don't think they'd step in and continue building it.
Can you just tell what kind of exposure they had?
Um, and so there, I don't, I haven't seen like any, any contract or anything from BEA once the money is received, but it, it just, the, the information that we have currently just says the town would receive the money if this was all approved. So, it doesn't say anything about being responsible if the developer goes bankrupt, does the town need to return the money?
And, and I think that's something that we definitely need to look at if we were to apply for this grant, and if the funds were to be awarded in whatever, however, um, you move forward with it, because you would have to do a hearing to actually accept those funds, and then what you would be doing with them, and you would have to structure any type of agreement, um, or loan agreement to, to protect any liability against the town.
Okay, that's my concern.
So, I just, I just kind of, kind of similar question, but this is, these grants are awarded per unit? 10,000 per unit? So, we hold, we have the ability to control that money until the unit is actually built? Or how does that work? So, if they don't, like, I'm not wishing anything bad on you, but if, if something were to happen, um, do we have that money?
So, I'm not sure if the money would be released until the project is completed. Again, the information that we've received from the state doesn't delve into that. He did mention Andrew Dorsett, who we met with, who's in charge of this program. He did mention that, that he was going to put, uh, Q and A questions, um, but they're, they're not there yet, so, um, the, the reason that this program, this program was supposed to have ended, or I think around November, but they were so concentrating so heavily on the other program that they're doing, where they were awarding the developers' money for building out for housing projects. So, this one sort of sat by the wayside until they were finished with that. So, now they're on to this one, and they've extended the dates, um, to apply, so.
So, could this be something, excuse me, that was set up, when they got a CO, they get a check for 10,000? Is that what?
I think that would be the agreement between the town and the, um, the developer. The way I read the guidance is, um, there's no clear, um, there's no clear mention in this, and again, this is just a brief guidance document, but it, it appears that it's, that you have to demonstrate that those units will be affordable, which they've already done with, um, their financing and their, their deed restrictions. Um, and then it needs to be approved by governor and council. So, I think we would, the board would need to do that. If awarded, you would need to determine the criteria of at what point you would award those, um, those funds.
I'm just saying, uh, the way to self-protect, if you did, uh, CO, you got your CO, you got $10,000, that, that-
I, I don't think the money would be distributed that way, because, first of all, they're in, they're being, the COs are being issued per building, so some buildings have four units, some buildings have six units. I, I think it would probably not be distributed until the project is completed. That's just my thought, and I don't know this for a fact, but-
Could go either way.
Yeah.
I mean, go ahead.
So, I think one thing, um, just to sort of second that, is BEA, this is a very new program, as you pointed out, it's, it's a new program for BEA, so this is something that came directly out of the West of New Hampshire, which is one-time thing from the governor. So, they're still working on a lot of the details, um, so I think there'll be more information to come on that as, as we go through the, the application process.
It just says, like, the program goals is where I got that from. It says, first line, is, this program will provide per-unit incentive payments. So, if you got a CO, that's per unit, then you would give an incentive, or, like you said, you're looking for approximately $10,000 per unit. That would seem to make sense, you know? Just a, an idea, I don't know, but that's the way the first line of this program overview reads, so. Any questions, Jim? No, I'm just, you're just looking for authorization for you to apply at this point?
We're seeking authorization to apply.
Okay.
If, if awarded, the board at that point would need to make a decision to accept the grant funds from the state and how you would use those. Um, and I think, um, our hope is that there would be more guidance available from BEA at that time, and we can also, um, work with, um, the developer, but also to see how other communities are using these funds, uh, on these types of, of projects.
Okay. Now, I'll move, um, to authorize the town administrator, administrator to submit grant application for eligible demolition and/or, am I doing the wrong one?
No, I, I had a corrected one, because I, I was cutting and pasting on a Friday afternoon, which I never knew.
You got the right one? He pensed for that before.
Yeah.
Okay. Getting old. Okay, I move that we authorize the town administrator to submit grant application for eligible per-unit grant for the development of Woodland Village Apartments on Barg Road, Map 4, Lot 87.
map four, lot 87-6, for a grant amount up to $630,000 under the Investment New Hampshire Municipal Per Unit Grant Program.
Second. One more question. That's not the limit that you can apply for though, right?
The total limit that a municipality can apply for is $1 million. The limit based on the number of affordable units at this project would be 630,000.
So if somebody came in, would we apply again for the additional 370 or whatever?
As, again, there's $100 million set aside for the 200-plus communities. I don't know of any.
There's a municipal cap of $1 million?
There is right now, yes.
So could we re?
Absolutely, yep.
That was my question.
Yep, if other, if other applicants were to come in.
So we're not shutting the door on it?
No.
So we have a motion by Jim, I believe seconded by Mark. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstaining, motion passed.
While I have Joanne here, can I just get, there are two similar grant programs by Invest NH. On page 51, behind tab nine, Invest NH has a municipal demolition grant program. This will cover 100% of demolition and environmental abatements in the creation of, to impact the shortage of available housing. It will also provide when the property will become a park, garden, or green space in a newer expanding residential neighborhood. My first request is to move forward with demolition, getting quotes for demolition of One North Mass, so that we could get all the permitting in place, subject to reimbursement under this program. So what I'd like to do is seek grant funds under this program to demolish the property that is kitty-corner across from the library, the blue.
It's time we had money in the budget for that last year.
It did a few years, I think it was 2020, it was 2021.
It got taken out, right?
It didn't get taken out, it, we just never moved forward with the RFP. We went through and did lead abatement on it, or lead study and asbestos study. So we know what will need to be abated, but we did not put it out for RFP.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion.
Hold on, hold on.
So this right here says the property will become a park, garden, or green space in a newer expanding residential neighborhood?
Yes.
What does that mean? So we demolish the building and then?
Either make it into, it's my understanding when the board acquired that property, they would, the first, Adam sought to potentially rent that space out. We found that that was not a viable option based, based on the state of the property. Ultimately, we wanted to acquire that property because of its location at that intersection. If ever intersection improvements needed to be made there, they required land. My proposal would be to demo this, do all the environmental abatement, and either turn it into just green space, a small park, a park, or parking and perhaps partner with one of the neighborhoods, neighbors, whether it's Four North Mass or if it's the church on the other side, something to provide some parking. I would argue that with the project in the factory street and others around here, the village is an expanding neighborhood. We are seeing more units come in down here, so I think it would be helpful for that.
So then follow-up for that, can we use the money for the development of that space or is it only limited to?
It's only for reimbursement of, for demolition costs only and, and environmental abatement.
But we will not be tying our hands for using it for a park and lot or anything like that?
Correct.
For sure, because it.
Because that's how I, that's how I would submit the application.
Go ahead, Carl. Yeah, we've been talking about this for a long time. So I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to move forward with the demolition of One North Mass, subject to successful grant application for reimbursement under the Invest New Hampshire Municipal Demolition Grant Program.
Second.
Any motion by Carl, seconded by Kelly, any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstaining, motion passes.
And on page 58 of your packet, you have a similar request. This is again under the Municipal Demolition Grant Program. However, this would be partnering with the developer of the residence at Hadley Falls. This is the development on Factory Street. Again, they have done a significant amount of demolition-related costs and environmental abatement, for any of you that knew what had been there over the many years. Joanne has been working on this application with the developer and our request this evening would be to submit a grant for reimbursement of eligible demolition and environmental costs incurred as a pass-through by the town to SMC Corporation in the amount of $349,840. And you have a.
That's their demolition costs?
That's their demolition costs and environmental abatement. You have a letter from them, as well as Joanne put together a cost of all the sewer accessibility fees, impact fees, and all those things.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrators to submit grant application for eligible demolition and/or environmental costs incurred in the development of the residence at Hadley Falls on Factory Street, map 34, lot 171, for reimbursement up to $349,845 under the Invest New Hampshire Municipal Demolition Grant Program.
Second.
Can you repeat that?
No.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Jim. Any discussion or questions?
I think you said 45,000.
Forty-five.
It should be 840, instead of 845. I think you just missed.
Yeah, sure.
Motion by, motion by Kelly, seconded by Jim. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All abstaining, motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
I will backtrack to E on the town administrator's report. This is at packet page 49. This is the 2023 ACH vendors, and I'd ask Danielle to speak for this.
So the town, since 2020, has been using ACH as a means to disperse funds to certain vendors. Before you see, you have a list of all of our current vendors that have been receiving payments this way. And there's a request to add one new vendor, that's New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank for the Series 16B bond that we have for the fire department right now. Currently, that's a semi-annual payment. And they have switched to a processor that is out of state. And to mail checks requires a lot more lead time than when invoices are issued. So they've, on the bottom of all their invoices, instructed that they prefer that the funds be wired directly through ACH and provide the information for that. So I'm, I'm looking for support this evening to continue the process that we've been utilizing. I'm, of course, able to answer any questions about the process. I did provide background in your packet, but I'm happy to answer any questions or review anything with the board.
I'll make a motion to authorize the finance department to continue sending electronic payments to the listed vendors as presented and add the new proposal.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All abstaining, motion passes. Sorry, I didn't say Kelly, wait a second, it's by Mark. You got that, all right.
And then the last item we have is part of the town administrator's report. We have the default budget for 2023.
The pages are out.
I have the full form.
Danielle has the form.
So can I just print it, hit print upstairs?
Uh, yeah, if you do, either upstairs or in IT, I can go get it.
I still have it up on my screen, so.
Yeah, if you print it, I'll run it and get it. And.
Did we do the opt-out yet?
Yes, you did the, you did the cat, you did the budget transfer. So all you have really is the action matrix and default budget.
To the action matrix.
Inaction matrix. Get some action going here. It's called the inaction matrix.
Kelly, you still working on that?
Yes.
Carl, have they done anything with the bridge, had any meetings?
No, waiting to call the first meeting. People are anxious to get started.
Uh, we're gonna look at the fee schedule, start, when are we gonna start doing that?
The departments have been discussing proposed fee revisions, and I know that that's something that they're gonna be continuing discussion at the department head meeting, I believe, this week. And then they want to bring that forward.
First meeting in February, could you?
I believe so, but I will confirm.
Yeah.
Or at least if we can get an update on where they're at.
I know some of them had to gather some information to, you know, support the amounts, and they want to make sure they had everything in order from all the departments, so it's a one-round request.
I can't understand why those ambulances are always broken.
So the chief and I do have a conference call scheduled with the insurance company this Wednesday to discuss replacement or continuation of the claim for the one that was totaled last year, just over a year ago. Part of the reason that the ambulances are always on the repair list is my understanding is because of the fact that we, the brand-new ambulance was totaled after it was on the road for about two months, and they had to basically keep the other ones longer than, they were supposed to be on their way out, instead they had to keep them on the road, and it's taking a lot to keep them roadworthy.
The thing that I don't understand, Peter, why are we, a year later, and we're still dealing with this, I mean, it should have been.
You would have thought so.
Yeah, I, I just, I can't.
I can get it on a little bit by, or, you know, can bring you the update after the conference call this week, but it does have to do with the difference in the chassis versus the full ambulance.
Derek, could you just do a quick review of the action matrix?
Great, thank you. So what we have before you is the default budget. Danielle's been working on this and we put the final touches on it this morning. I do want to bring to your attention, we did make a little bit of a change in the way that we've done default budget that we've done in the past. If you actually look at the SB2, the Deliberative Session RSAs, it talks about appropriations made at previous town meetings, and it talks about contracts, specifically contracts that have not gone before the voters for approval, like a CBA. So we're talking your electrical, your fuel, your oil, your propane, your salt, your commodities. Unfortunately, the way we've been through training at NHMA as well as reading the letter of the law, the amount appropriated was approved at the last town meeting, not the contract with a new contract amount.
Makes sense.
So what we have done, and this is very different than what we've done when I was a finance director and in the last couple of years with Danielle, is we've actually reduced down our, all our fuels, all our commodities to match the appropriation amount of last, of last year, not the consumption amount at the new rate.
So, sorry, can I ask?
That's fine, except when you have a huge price increase, right?
So that's why I'm asking, what, so there's no way that other communities are doing that as well?
This is the, this is the training that, this is the training that NHMA has provided.
Recently?
Yes.
Yes, at September, at the September.
December, actually.
Of December.
They held a specific training on default budget development in December.
So what's the recommendation for how to deal with that when you have huge price increases?
They've indicated that because you have to, the, the letter of the law says contracts in the previous year's operating budget in the amount so approved, and that language was added in 2018 to say in the amount so approved. So what they've indicated is towns should be individually listing out all of the lines like we're required to. However, when you make that appropriation amount, if you end up in a default budget, you might have to re, you know, readjust where you have the funds. So the select board, using their powers to transfer funds, would be able to say, hey, we have to cover our fuel costs, and it's gonna be X amount of dollars higher than what's in the default, so we're going to hold off on maybe completing a CIP project or something that might have been in the budget, and instead shift those funds to the needs to operate the commodities.
We should write a letter to our state representatives because that doesn't make any sense.
How about, how about like in a employee contract, though? When you do that, you have to make sure you spell out in the contract each year's increase.
Yes.
If you do that, and you, if you don't do that.
So you have, you have given our multi-year CBAs, we have given the voters of the estimated increase each year. You've given them an opportunity to vote on those increases. However, because we have individual contracts for these commodities.
I understand that, yeah.
We haven't given the voters an opportunity to vote on it.
Right. And for those CBA amounts where they have gone before the voters, they are included in the defaults. So the difference with the commodities, just to give you an idea of which ones we're talking about, we have electric, heating oil, propane, natural gas, diesel, gasoline for vehicles, and salt. Those are the ones we've historically looked at. To give you an idea of what that cost is, you're talking about a total of only about $82,000. And so part of the argument is, you know, assuredly, they believe every town could find the necessary funding. But that, that is what we're talking about with utilities, and it is a change in how we've calculated the default budget before. So we wanted to make sure that we brought that forward. And, you know, it is a default budget that this board puts together, so if there's any different direction, let me know and I can adjust.
So Danielle, we basically have to nail down those numbers so the process is completely transparent.
Yes.
I understand, but I don't like it, that's all.
Well, I mean, yeah, I agree. You could find, it kind of defeats the purpose of building a default budget, but that's another thing. So if we get propane, if we get some sort of contract for multi-year, that still isn't accounted for an increase. So even if we have a contract, we wouldn't be able to account for a year of year.
Not, not in your default, but if, if the hopes is next, we, we would have an operating budget that's approved by voters, that new amount that's in the operating budget would go forward to the default next year. And again, the, the other place that it, the other place that it really impacts is our IT services, because as you can imagine with the pandemic, we've seen software contracts go between 5% and 10% increases. So I think we have about, about 80,000 in just IT and their software as well as fiber and all those. So those are really the two.
And those aren't, those have never been included in the default budget. We're just noticing that that is becoming a bigger gap.
It's becoming a bigger gap than it was.
There is another question, I can talk about that same time, so.
Can I just ask a question about the IT? So why wouldn't we include that in default when that's an operational?
It's the same argument that the commodities are also operational, it's required, and it's up to the governing body to find the funds elsewhere if you end up with a default budget, whether that's, you know, through other cuts or potentially pausing programs or shifting funds around. It's, from my understanding, never good. I've not actually been a finance director in a default budget, but obviously, understanding the concepts, it's never a fun time, but it would, you know, be the way we'd have to operate to make sure funds are where they need to be for continuation of services. So the other, the other request kind of before you, the other direction I need is, Adam brought up a concern that the recycling removal costs, bulky waste and tipping, those three lines and transfer station, have seen significant differences. have seen significant differences. He has contracts for those as well, and wanted to know, should those be included in the default budget? It's a similar situation with the commodities and that they've not gone before the voters separately. There's also been a big increase in the cost per ton for recycling specifically. At the time of budgeting, it was about $56 a ton that was used. And now the cost is $81.70 per ton as of the last rate. We don't have a contract for that line, recycling. We, we have to take it, the rate that is the Boston area. So it is a contract, but it's not a contract with a locked rate. It's a contract for the market rate of that area.
But that line goes like this during the year, though. I mean, it goes up and down. It'll be $86, and you put it in the budget, and it comes to $56.
So with those three lines, I did mirror them to the same thing as the commodities under the new direction, making sure that we're using last year's total appropriation for those lines. To give you an idea, looking at how we did the default last year and previous years, we had matched the amount in the default budget in '21 to the default, to the operating budget request. And we had kept the '22 request in the default for '21 for tipping as well. If we made a mistake in how we calculated that default budget, luckily, we didn't end up with a default budget, so we got a fresh start. And those numbers are now in there at the operating appropriation amount.
So what's the bottom line on the default budget?
So the default budget is $25,957,687.
I got it right here.
Page four or five.
It's a reduction of $1,247,000?
That number on the D R A form is slightly skewed only because the E M S fund is a separate warrant article. So that 400,000 appears as a $400,000 increase, a little over 400,000.
And you also, that 1.247?
Yeah, it's 1.161 in comparison to our current budget.
So the actual, the actual default budget went up by $838,204? After taking out the E M S stuff, is that, is that what you're saying?
Are you looking at that same?
I'm looking at the same page.
I'm just trying to make sure I know what's going.
There's four numbers going across.
So, so there's an increase of $838,205, and then there is one, one time, reductions of one time of, so it's about a difference of 400,000.
So Derek and I had looked at some comparisons to get an idea of, you know, this year's budget. And it is a reduction. There were some things, obviously, last year that were one-time things that were removed, such as the fire truck or other, you know, capital improvement projects.
So what is the difference between our default budget and our current proposed budget?
For general plan?
Yeah, at this time, which could change tomorrow. We don't know what, you know, what happens at the budget committee.
So that difference is $1,161,619.46.
So heaven forbid we get the default budget. We'd have to find $1,161,619 out of our budget, proposed budget.
If you were going to, if you were going to enact everything proposed by the department, yes.
Plus all the things that we couldn't add.
So that includes reductions of new positions. There were two new positions proposed, all those normal reductions that we see in a default budget. I know we're not talking about fund balance at this point, but that is part of why we discussed that fund balance, you know, if the town ended up in a default budget and the town still wanted to complete the projects, but there wasn't enough funding, that fund balance could be used at the time of tax rate setting as well to assist with those types of.
And I would say that last year at this time, the difference was $900,000. So this is, there was a change in methodology, but I don't believe that it is.
Affected it as much as?
As, you know, it did increase it by a bit, but we wanted to make you aware.
Would we have additional fees with the school side of the budget, where we would have to give them money in a default situation to cover heating costs?
No, the request, the school's operating budget is entirely separate.
Operating budget, so we.
I know that, but in the event of, they don't, not that this is the case, they didn't have the money to heat the schools.
They have to heat it within their own operating budget, whether it's default or otherwise. So their requests from the town can only be for the amount of the funds that were approved.
If it was a default budget, that's the approved amount that they can request. And if, if they're just like us, they'd have to find the money to buy heating oil and all that stuff.
And they do that same calculation with their utilities as well.
But does Scott Cross do that?
Yes.
Yes, he did, absolutely. Again, they're more personnel-driven, and most of their personnel are C B As. So.
All right, so what do you need on this, a motion?
A motion to approve would be appreciated, as presented.
And I'm going to go ahead and sign this one and then send it around.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve the default budget for the downtown as presented to us this evening. Be it simple, I don't have that.
Do you, you said as presented, so that's 25,957,687.
Okay, Mark made the motion, we get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kelly, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, standing, motion passes. Is there anything for non-public?
There's nothing for non-public.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn. Motion by Kelly, seconded.
Motion.
All in favor?
Not ready yet. Motion by Kelly, seconded by Mark, any discussion? Seeing none, Mark can go sign that.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, standing, motion passes.
Thank you very much.